Everybody, we call this meeting to order and our today's invocation will be the Reverend Farron Johnson from Pastor Good Shepherd Lutheran Church. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Almighty God, you give us so many blessings in our lives that we can use as gifts. And one of the greatest gifts is the opportunity to serve and care for others. We humbly ask that you send your Spirit to be with us now, to lead and guide those who give of their time to serve the community in our fair city of Virginia Beach. May our focus always be upon your will and our decisions be in the interest of the common good of our citizens, their businesses, and the visitors who come to our city and our home each year. We give thanks to you for the members of this council, the mayor, and all who serve while seeking your wisdom in the choices that are made. May their work in our lives always bring honor to your holy name. Amen.
Amen. At every formal meeting, we have a moment of silence for all those brave people that defend our city and country. But today is especially sad as we offer a moment of silence for two fallen heroes of our police officers. May we give them a moment of silence. Thank you. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate it. Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have a roll call?
All present, Mayor, with the exception of Councilmember Hutchinson.
Okay, do we have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So, second.
Okay.
I'm sorry, who made the motion? Thank you. Vice Mayor, could I have your vote, please?
Hi. I don't know why I keep pushing and pushing. It's just, it's I.
Very well. By a vote of 11 to 0, you have approved the closed session in accordance with motion to recess.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the formal session of February 25, 2025, and the informal informal sessions of March 4, 2025?
Submit.
Okay, let's open the vote.
By a vote of 9 to 0, with Councilmember Rouse abstaining, you've approved the minutes.
Okay. Oh, okay. Okay, next, we're going to do the mayor's presentation. Could I ask the Virginia Beach Youth Football and Cheer 11U, Virginia Beach Mustangs to come up? Oh, yeah. Welcome. And I've asked my friend and colleague, Councilmember Cash Green, if he was so kind to do the honors.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Hello, everyone. I'm going to read the proclamation. Virginia United Youth Football and Cheer was formed in 2014 with a vision to change the landscape of youth sports in the Hampton Roads Metroplex and in the state of Virginia. And whereas we want the kids to be celebrated first with the coaches, parents, and fans right there with them, and whereas Virginia United certifies cheerleaders and dancers each season to ensure they are of the proper age to be participating in Virginia United and that they are assigned to participate in their proper competition squads for the Virginia United State Cheer Competition. And whereas many of the players come from various communities surrounding Virginia Beach, bringing together a diverse and united group of young athletes. And whereas in December 2024, the 11U Mustangs and 12U Charged Up Bulls brought home another national championship, a testament to their hard work, determination, and remarkable talent. Their achievements continue to inspire and bring immense pride to our community here in Virginia. And whereas the 11U Mustangs and 12U Charged Up Bulls teams have achieved an extraordinary milestone. This year, they competed in Plant City, Florida, and returned home as national champions in their divisions. Now, therefore, I, Robert M. Bobby Dyer, Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, do hereby proclaim Virginia United Football and Cheer 11U Virginia Beach Mustangs. In Virginia Beach, I call upon all citizens, family, and friends to join us in honoring the team's accomplishments and highlight the values of teamwork, commitment, and community pride that these young athletes exemplify. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, to be affixed this 18th day of March 2025.
Sir, you need to be at the mic.
We'd like to thank everybody for this. Kids worked really hard all season. Last couple of years, they've lost in the finals and they finally broke the door down and won a national championship, something they'll remember forever. Thank you.
Do you have the 12th group up there, too?
I'm not sure where they are.
Oh, they're not? Okay. Okay, thanks much, folks. Is there, is the other group here from the 12th group? Okay, okay, we're good then. Yeah, could you go ahead and do that? Cash, can you give this gentleman, and they'll hold pass it on?
Okay.
Okay. You guys are good. Thank you. Hey, congrats, Mayor. Great, great achievement. Okay, moving forward, public hearings. Wait a minute. Oh, wait a minute, Boys, Girl Scouts, come on down here. Yeah, you know who we are. You thought you were going to get away with it, huh? Hey, walk up to the microphone and tell me your name and troop. And leaders, too. Come on, you're part of the family.
Thomas Calpo, Troop 490.
Okay, go ahead and come up here. I got a pen for you. After you get your name, come on up and get your pen.
Joseph McDermott, Troop 490.
Hey, how you doing?
Gabriella McDermott, Troop 490G.
Welcome.
Alena Bradley, Troop 490G.
There you go. Welcome.
Madeline Doty, Troop 490G.
Faith Abano, Troop 490G.
Elekoll, Troop 490G.
Reagan Ho, Troop 490G.
Hello. You guys come up, too. You ain't getting out of this.
Kasha Calpo, Troop 490.
Hey, great.
Kendrick DeMichael, Troop 490G.
Robin McDermott, Troop 490, Troop 490G, and Cubmaster for PAC 490.
All right.
A lot of titles.
Can we have a hand for the great future of America? Okay, thank you all. Okay, moving on to public hearings. First one, proposed franchise agreement for city-owned property of beach operations and sandy area east of 4101 and 4201 Atlantic Avenue.
Mayor, we don't have any speakers for this item.
Okay, I bet. Number two, proposed franchise agreement for city-owned property parking valet services at portions of 18th Street, 20th Street, and Arctic Avenue adjacent to Atlantic Park.
Mayor, we have one speaker, Susan Haley. She's via WebEx. Ma'am, you're unmuted and you can begin to speak.
I live at 501 16th Street, and I also have a house at 1604 Baltic. My main question is, you know, the parking is very limited in that area. And of course, with the RPP and everything going on, I know the valet, my biggest question is, once these cars are collected in valet, where will they be parked?
Mr. Mayor, do you want us to answer?
Okay.
Ms. Haley, this is your councilman, Worth Remick. They are parked, to be parked in the parking deck.
Okay, but when those spaces are completely utilized and full, where else will these cars be parked from valet?
The parking agreement does allow cars to be parked in the immediate neighborhood.
All right, so then the RPP will be going away?
It will be, it will remain for sure.
Okay, so in the neighborhoods surrounding this area, vehicles will be parked on the street and from the valet?
Yes, that's assuming the parking lot is full, and you are far enough away, I believe, that it will not impact you.
Okay. All right, that was just my main question is where all these cars will be going, because a lot of the neighbors are all speaking of this, of where this is going, where they're going to be deposited. So they're basically on 18th Street, 19th Street, 20th, between Baltic and Arctic and that whole area around there. There's not a whole lot of street parking.
So the agreement allows for 1,000 cars within, I believe, a one-mile radius, Mr. Stiles? Do you recall that? Yeah.
Okay, because I'm sort of within a mile radius. I'm, I'm on Baltic, right between 16th and 17th Streets, so I was just wondering if they'd be going south of 17th Street.
I've got to go see if that's a mile radius, because a mile radius is that half a mile in each direction or a mile total? Anyhow, we can, we can talk about this offline.
All right. Thank you, Worth.
Mayor, there's no other speakers.
Okay, thank you. And now, proposed cafe agreements for the following: Basil LLC and Basil Pizza, Ra Sidewalk Cafe, B Curly LLC, 2D Cafe, Eatery, Ray Sidewalk Cafe, C Seha Incorporated, Red Dragon, Ray Sidewalk Cafe, Tripoli LLC, La Deuce Vita, Ra Sidewalk Cafe, E Las Palmas Boardwalk Corporation, Ray Boardwalk Cafe, F Camellas Incorporated, 9th Street Grill Cafe, Sidewalk Cafe, G Seda Incorporated, Street Grill, Ray Sidewalk Cafe, Corey LLC Cafe, Atlantic Sidewalk Cafe, Virginia George Company, Doughboys Cafe, Sidewalk Cafe, J Kent Planet Pizza Incorporated, Sidewalk Cafe, VB Raw Bar Incorporated, Seaside Raw Bar Cafe, Ray Sidewalk Cafe, and then 11th Street Tap House LLC, Chico's, Ray Boardhouse, Boardwalk Cafe, and Dunes Investment Associates LLC, the Dunes Cafe, Ray Boardwalk Cafe, and finally Crestline Hotels and Resorts Marriott Courtyard Boardwalk Cafe. Any speakers on them?
No, Mayor, there's none.
Okay, thank you. Are there any others, you know, any speakers signed up?
No, Mayor.
Okay, this morning, we can do the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, and ordinance and resolutions. Number one is a resolution to provide for the issuance and sale of short, I mean, stormwater utility revenue bond series 2025 in a maximum principal amount of $90 million, and provide for the form detail and payments thereof to finance the cost of improvements to the stormwater quality utility system, and authorize the execution and delivery of documents, certain related documents. Number two is the ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into an 80-foot city-owned drainage and canal easements and into a 5-foot city-owned drainage and utility easement located at the rear of 1832 Duke of York Way. Maintain an existing brick paver walkway and an existing variable width floating dock and construct and maintain a bulkhead with wood piles, wharf, wood dock, and boathouse, and that's in District 8. Number three is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $555,750 from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality to the FY 2024-25 Capital Improvement Program to capital project number 10391, Southern Rivers Watershed, Ray Implementation of Water Quality Improvement Projects. Number four is the ordinance, Ray, membership of the Active Transportation Advisory Committee requested by the Active Transportation Advisory Committee. Number five is the ordinance to membership of the Advertising Advisory Committee requested by City Council. Number six is the ordinance to amend City Code Section 469, Ray, membership of the Audit Committee, requested by City Council. Number seven is the ordinance to amend the membership of the Bayfront Advisory Commission. That's requested by City Council. Number eight is the ordinance to amend City Code Section 6-162, Ray, membership of the Beaches and Waterways Advisory Commission requested by the Beaches and Waterways Advisory Commission. Number nine is the ordinance, Ray, membership of the Community Organizations Grant Review and Allocation Committee requested by City Council. Number 10 is the ordinance to amend City Code Section 2-122, Ray, membership of the Deferred Compensation Board requested by City Council. Number 11 is the ordinance, Ray, membership of the Green Ribbon Committee requested by City Council. Number 12 is the ordinance to amend the City Code Section 16-54, Ray, membership of the Housing Advisory Board requested by City Council. Number 13 is the ordinance, Ray, chair of the Military Economic Development Advisory Committee requested by Military Economic Development Advisory Committee. Number 14 is the ordinance to amend City Council, excuse me, City Code Section 2-2, Ray, membership of the Resort Advisory Commission requested by Vice Mayor Wilson and Councilmember Remick. Number 15 is the ordinance, Ray, membership of the Transition Area and Facility Traffic Area Citizen Advisory Committee requested by City Council. Number 16 is the ordinance to membership of the Virginia Beach Cannabis Advisory Task Force requested by City Council.
Open a hearing, I'm planning.
Number one is the Christopher Taylor for a variance to Section 4.4 of the subdivision regulation, Ray, subdivision, the existing lot, to create two parcels for single-family dwelling at 636 Congress Street. That's in District 8. Number two is the Bonnie Wright and Company modification of conditions, so a conditional use permit, Ray, the borrow pit at 200 Princess Anne Road, and that's in District 2, with Ms. Henley has a few changes. If she'd like to say what that is.
Yes, I just want to address the conditions and a change we need to make in this application. I would just say that the Planning Commission was attempting to make certain that there was not a problem with debris and so forth on the roadways as these trucks exited, and they added a Condition 25 to require a vehicle washdown station. But in looking at this since then, it's kind of determined that that's really not the best way to do it. So what I'm recommending and would move to do would be to delete that Section 25 and instead go back up to Condition 16, which addresses the roadway and with some new language to describe the stone construction entrances that are going to be a better way to clean these trucks. And this wording, we're going to substitute this wording for Condition 16, and I'll read it now. "To ensure the roadway to the site is kept clear at all times, the existing 25-foot by 100-foot stone construction entrance shall be cleaned and restored to proper functioning condition, and two new stone construction entrances, 65 feet by 75 feet each, shall be installed. All construction entrances shall be adequately maintained to minimize the amount of debris and sediment that is tracked into the public right-of-way. All haul trucks leaving the site shall cross one of the 25-foot by 75-foot construction entrances prior to crossing the 25-foot by 100-foot construction entrance and exiting the site. An assign directing as such shall be erected in a conspicuous location at the exit of the site. Any sand, dirt, and other debris within the right-of-way must be promptly collected and disposed of, and shall not be allowed to accumulate along the side of the road or within any area of the public right-of-way." So with those two changes, I would move approval for this application when you deal with the entire agenda. Thank you very much.
Number three is New Jerusalem Church, New Jerusalem Holiness Church, New Jerusalem Church, New Jerusalem Church of God in Christ for a modification of conditions to a conditional use permit of religious use at 118 Bishop Thurgood Avenue, 1063 Long Street Avenue, undeveloped parcel north of 129 Hughes Avenue, and undeveloped parcel directly west of 1059 Long Street Avenue, and that's in District 6. Number four is Mercer Sykes, Sykes Real Properties LLC for a conditional use permit, Ray, open air market at 614 10th Street, and that's in District 5. Number six is Jeffrey Smith and Jenna Cornell, Jenna, Nataliee Cornell, and Nicholas Evangelus Sappos for conditional use permit, Ray, residential kennel at 216 Princess Anne Road, that is in District 2. Number six is Green Clink Auto Wash LLC, Boom Inc. for conditional use permit, Ray, a car wash facility at 1014 Independence Boulevard, that is in District 9. Number seven is Jahana Hartfield, Greg Rogers for conditional use permit, Ray, assembly use at 1708 Tulip Drive, Suite 102, and that is in District 9. Number eight is Justin M. and Candace Howard and conditional use permit, Ray, short-term rentals at 933 Pacific Avenue, Unit C, and that's in District 5. Number nine is JD Enterprise, Virginia DVA Atlantic Rental Homes, Daniel Davis and Justin B. Taylor for conditional use permit, short-term rentals at 911 Pacific Avenue, and that is in District, excuse me, District 5. Number 10 is JD Enterprise and Virginia DVA Atlantic Rental Homes Lee Zoo for a conditional use permit, Ray, short-term rental at 911 Pacific Avenue, Unit B, excuse me, that's 931 Pacific Avenue, Unit B, and that's in District 5. Move for approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's open it.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you have approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor, noting the Amendment to item, Planning Item Number 2.
Okay, do we have any appointments tonight?
We do, Mr. Mayor. Let's see. Health Service Advisory Board, we're going to appoint Dr. Stephanie Moody from the Historic Review Board, to appoint Burl Self and Jeffrey Pierce. For the Human Rights Commission, to appoint Beatrice Amberman. The Independent Citizens Review Board, to reappoint Michael Kelly and Annabelle Palthrest. Open Space Advisory Committee, to appoint Tangela Green. The Active Transportation Advisory Board, these are for liaisons, Jennifer Rouse, Advertising Advisory Committee Liaison, Worth Remick, and Dr. Emily Ross-Hammon. To, for liaison for the Audit Committee is Stacy Cummings and Joshua, Josh Schuman. Liaison to the Bayfront Advisory Board is Stacy Cummings and Joshua Josh Schuman. The COG Review and Allocation Committee Liaison, Cal- liaison Cal Cash-Jackson-Green. The Deferred Compensation Board, liaison Dave Hutchinson. The Green Ribbon Committee, liaison Barbara Henley and Joshua Shulman. The Housing Advisory Board, liaison Cal Cash-Jackson-Green. Transition Area ITA, liaison Barbara Henley, and Virginia Beach Cannabis Advisory Task Force, liaison Michael Belugi. Move for approval.
Okay, Nate, any discussion? Okay, let's open the vote.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you have approved the appointments as read by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay, any unfinished business? New business? Thank you all. We are adjourned.